Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Romella Markarian. I'm the current Chair of the Glendale Status of Commission on the Status of Women, and I call this meeting to order at 4:32 PM. Maybe get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hojoian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambalot?
Yes.
Commissioner Samerjian? Vice Chair Arum? Chair Markarian?
Here. Maybe please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, of course. Chair Markarian, the agenda was posted on Wednesday, November 5th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Very good. At this time, I think we're moving to introductions and presentations. I think we have YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena on the agenda tonight to provide a debrief on our partnership and collaboration. I think Deborah Saw was unable to join us, and we have Yomi Lu, right? For making, thank you for making yourself available and being here for this presentation today. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, to the commissioners. I know that it's been a really big month honoring survivors, survivor stories, their voices, and how we can serve survivors better in Glendale. So I'm here to give an update on the Safe Haven Initiative. It did launch. So far, I believe, leadership with Fire Chief Brooks have completed our DV 101 training, and that focuses on survivor-centered approaches to making survivors feel safe and welcome at all fire stations. So we had that kickoff very recently, later in the month, and I do want to thank all the commissioners for being there. We look forward to honoring our current work, seeing how this initiative will really impact the safety of the community, the safety of survivors. We do know that it takes, on average, survivors seven times before they are able to flee an abusive situation. And so we hope through this initiative that the community will be safer and that survivors will have a place to go, even if they need to go multiple times. So that's sort of the update. As it is a very recent initiative, we hope to measure the impacts as we go and also engage the community in more trainings, more learning sessions, and yeah, more ways that we can all become advocates for survivors year-round.
Thank you, thank you. It was a very special event, and we really value our collaboration. And it was absolutely putting our efforts into action, which I believe is very much needed and well-received. And we're grateful for Chief Brooks and everybody involved. Any comments from the commissioners? I know, yes?
I'd like to congratulate the Y and the commission and staff for all their work on that event. I think it was a terrific idea. And I was at, last week I was at the Seroptimist International of Glendale meeting, and there's a time when you can make announcements, and I made an announcement about the Safe Haven Initiative, and they spontaneously broke into applause. It was just really interesting. It was wonderful. And it's gotten great press coverage, local press coverage. And my understanding is, after talking to Deborah, that she's willing to offer the short, what is it? 30-minute training to us via Zoom, if we'd like to do that. So I know I personally would, and I imagine some of the other commissioners would too. Hopefully, we can arrange that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to highlight that that is an initiative that we're looking ahead to as part of our centennial year in Glendale of YWCA, supporting women and starting off as women shelters. So we are going to see a lot of domestic violence education rollout. We're going to even expand. So we normally have our 40-hour peer domestic violence counselor training available to the community. We're going to expand upon that by offering the 30-minute sessions and even day-long advocate sessions for community partners. That's something that's in the works, and we're really hoping to increase those offerings next year during our centennial.
Terrific.
If I may, I just wanted to say a couple of words, piggybacking off of Commissioner Lambalot's comments. The event was an absolute success, and the entire idea, I think, is a fantastic step in assuring those who, at the time of their need, know where to go and how to be protected. It's a wonderful thing that the city of Glendale is doing, and kudos to YWCA, as well as our Chief Brooks, for coming up with the idea and allowing for this possibility for the victims of domestic violence. In fact, the Glendale Association of Realtors had their annual Cantry event, which is our annual fundraising event. And we raised funds to support three major charitable organizations within Glendale, one of which is the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena. Yes, and Chief Brooks was present there. And when our CEO announced this latest initiative, it was received, everybody just applauded, and they were really impressed about this possibility that's been created for victims of domestic violence. So kudos to you and the city staff. I know that the city staff worked really hard to put together the Purple Tie event. So thank you for all your time and efforts, and it was truly a well-received ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to congratulate. I was out of country, but I heard it was a good event. Wishing you more success. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along to our next agenda items. That would be the oral communication. Do we have any cards? Any speakers?
Chair, if I may just read into the record. At this time, we will move on to oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report. Chair Markarian, we don't have any callers at this time. We're just waiting for the speaker card to be submitted.
Very good, thank you.
Chair Markarian, we have Anahid Yajian.
Hi.
Go ahead, Anahid.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. My name is Anahid Yajian, and I'm a Glendale-based independent filmmaker, here to share with you a deeply important project I'm embarking on that I believe aligns precisely with the objectives of this commission, particularly on the heels of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In early December, I'll be shooting a nine-minute narrative short film called Nellie, based on a true experience I had when living abroad in Armenia after I graduated from Occidental College. In the film, two Armenian-American young women in Los Angeles instinctively decide to intervene on the beating of a recently-immigrated Armenian citizen in the street. What follows is a reckoning with privilege, power, class, language, and immigration status that speaks poignantly to so many issues at the forefront of American life today, particularly in Los Angeles. The film aims to complicate simplistic narratives of victimhood and survival by giving the abused a voice that is eventually louder than that of her saviors. Power becomes a currency that is gained through the reclamation of one's own dignity, rather than through financial or political means. As a feminist, this work stands as my tribute to female friendship and our collective power. As an Armenian-American, it serves as a love letter to the dynamic, imperfect, once-in-a-lifetime critical mass of my people in the diaspora here. And as an American, it is my way of admitting that I don't always know what's best for others. This final point is key when the time comes for those of us who have been in abusive situations to find the inner strength and determination to make a lasting choice toward a brighter, more empowered day. In this sense, Nellie is a universal story and a crucially timed one. For these reasons, and as a GUSD alumni who, after years of living and thriving elsewhere, has chosen to return to Glendale to start a family and a small business and to make art, it's important to me to shoot this film right here, particularly at a time when film and television production in the Los Angeles area is at an all-time low. Spirits amongst colleagues are down, and the future of our industry is unclear. I'm learning firsthand what has already been widely known. Filming in LA and its adjacent towns is extremely expensive, especially for low- and mid-budget projects like this one. The price tag on our art form is exorbitant and a significant deterrent for artists who are choosing instead to make great work elsewhere. I don't want to join them. But in the case of Nellie, we're looking at a possible expense of over $10,000 simply to obtain a three-day filming permit from the city of Glendale. This represents nearly 25% of our production budget and is the single most expensive line item. Commissioners, I'm inviting you to join this project by assisting my team and I in affording these costs. We're trying to do this by the book and are fully insured production. We welcome the participation of the city, fire, and police departments in ensuring we have a safe shoot. But we're not an institution. There's no endowment here. I'd be honored to partner with you to make Nellie a sustainable reality. I've brought a packet where you can learn more about me, my achievements, and the film itself. My ambitions are serious, and I think my background will attest to that. The success of this film, once completed in the international festival circuit, will only bring affirming attention and artistic recognition to Glendale. Thank you for considering the opportunity to invest in one of your own.
Thank you, Ms. Yajian. Do we discuss any, or do we ask questions?
You may ask questions for clarification. Ms. Yajian has been in touch with staff previously. Given the timeline, we were unable to add her to tonight's agenda and what staff might recommend, so that you can take a vote on this, on whether or not there will be a financial support of this. And to learn more, we suggest that we place her on the December 8th agenda so that you can have a full discussion and take a vote then.
Any questions right now?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there a nonprofit foundation supporting? Are you a part of a nonprofit that would be?
So the Alliance of Women Directors is my fiscal sponsor for the project. In the packet, there's a page that has information on our partnership. So the project is thus able to receive tax-deductible contributions toward its budget.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along. Consent items.
Could I interrupt for one second? Did we approve the minutes yet?
No, this is, I think, next steps.
Okay.
Right.
Chair Markarian, would you like to read in the consent items?
Ah, yes, please.
Or would you like me to go ahead?
Yeah, I think approval of August 2025 minutes.
The following are routine and may be acted upon in one motion. Any member of the commission or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, now, I think I'm proposing the approval of August 2025 minutes. Do we have a motion?
We need a motion.
Second.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I seconded.
Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Hojoian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambalot?
Yes.
Commissioner Samerjian is absent. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Arum?
Yes.
And Chair Markarian?
Yes.
That passes 4-0.
Thank you. All right, so moving along, the action items. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Markarian. The item before you on 6A is a consideration of a resolution of the Commission on the Status of Women for setting the time of a regular monthly meeting and reviewing the tentative meeting schedule for 2026. As you know, the city council in the last couple of months has taken up the cadence of the meeting schedule for this commission, the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as the duties for which it oversees, and has gone ahead and approved the return of a monthly meeting schedule. At the last commission meeting in August, there was discussion amongst the commission about an interest in pushing the start time from 4:00 PM to 4:30 PM to make it more amenable to commissioners' schedules. And as such, you have a resolution before you tonight that sets that monthly meeting cadence to the second Monday with a start time of 4:30 PM, which would become our regular meeting time on a monthly basis. And I've also gone ahead and included, as an attachment, the tentative 2026 meeting schedule for your review. Should you see any glaring conflicts or issues with those dates, please let us know. This is something that, it's been called tentative or proposed because it's a bit squishy, and we can work on it as we move forward together if something comes up. But I wanted to make that available to you to assist in scheduling for the year ahead. And that's the end of my report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from commissioners here? All right. Then we need a motion to approve?
We do.
The resolution?
Yes, we do.
I make move for a motion to have CSW meetings to become monthly going forward, starting the second Monday of every month. And the time of the meetings, there's a suggestion to move from 4:00 to 4:30. So I make a move to, for approval of the monthly meetings, as well as the new start time of 4:30.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Hojoian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambalot?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arum?
Yes.
Chair Markarian?
Ah, yes.
That passes 4-0 with Commissioner Samerjian absent.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to reports and information only items. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair Markarian. The item before you is the end of 2025 legislative session update. The legislative season ended on October 13th with the governor deciding which bills he was going to pass and veto for the legislative session. I wanted to work with Chair Markarian and bring this back to the commission as you all had a very productive and proactive year in taking a stance in suggesting which bills the city council should consider and recommend taking a stance on. At your May 2025 meeting, the Commission on the Status of Women voted to support four bills. And just as a reminder, it was AB 60 by Pappin on cosmetic safety, AB 65 by Aguirre Curry on school and community college employees for paid disability and parental leave, AB 798 from Calderon for emergency diaper and wipe distribution program, and SB 411 by Perez for Stop Child Hunger Act of 2025. Subsequent to that meeting, the Women's Legislative Caucus published their priority list. And following that, this commission had a subsequent conversation about further bills that you would like to take a position on. And at your June 30th meeting, you voted to support an additional seven proposed bills at that time. AB 432 focused on Menopause Care Equality Act, AB 495, Family Preparedness Act of 2025, AB 788, Rehabilitation and Safety for Incarcerated Women, AB 836, Midwifery Education Landscape Analysis, and SB 75, Women Prison Apprenticeships. SB 258, Justice for Disabled Spouses, and SB 271, Transforming Higher Education for Student Parents Through Essential Financial Child Care Support Services. These items were all presented to the city council, as you know, and they went ahead and supported and gave us the direction that aligned with the city's general legislative policies and practices. And I have also provided in this report basically how the governor voted on all 917 bills that passed the House of Legislature. He signed 794 into law with 123 in veto, and I also included all of the other position letters that the city of Glendale took a stance on. We will look to bring and to invite Kira Ross, our state lobbyist, back to the commission earlier on in the legislative calendar in 2026 so that we can continue this proactive effort that this commission has committed to doing, and that way we can continue helping to inform the city council and the community on the matters before them. With that, I will end my report back to the commission, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
No, we don't need an action on this one. It's just a receive-and-file chairperson.
Thank you. This takes us to commission and staff comments. If you have any.
I have a few. One is the student ex officios have not been chosen yet. I am on the ad hoc committee. I was the only one who volunteered, but we will be interviewing them in, later in November or early December. We have a number of applications. Lucy, can we ask at this point if any other commission members want to join the ad hoc? Or would that have to be an agendized item?
Because, because we took action on it last time to identify the form, the ad hoc committee, we would have to take action again. I just want to quickly review to make sure that that, we could do that at this meeting.
One of the student ex officios, Angelina, volunteered to be on the committee, and she has done, ad hoc committee, but she has done some work so far. But she's in college, and she's very, very busy. So the question would be, can another commission member, if interested?
I, I'm going to say it's not, it's not an action item. And so as a result, we can't change the formation of the commission at this meeting. We could do it at a future meeting.
Well, hopefully, we'll have the process complete, and we'll be able to introduce the student ex officios at the December 8 meeting. I have a couple other comments. Should I go on, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. I also wanted to thank staff and the Armenian Bar Association for the panel discussion that we held on essentially virtual or digital domestic violence on October 23rd. We didn't have a huge audience, but I think the material presented was very useful. And there were a number of questions afterwards. So again, thanks to staff and the Armenian Bar Association for the collaboration and the event. And then finally, I just wanted to comment on the ordinance that was passed that resulted in our duties being enlarged and our ability to hold monthly meetings. It was passed unanimously by the city council on September 30th at their meeting. However, it was an over-six-month process, and there were a number of times it was on the agenda, and then it was continued. And then there were a few times where speakers were allowed. I think I spoke three times at three different meetings. But the community came out in force. We had a lot of community support and speakers and emails supporting this ordinance. So we're really grateful, and it was really wonderful to see the, the community speak up on this issue. And I just wanted to just mention a couple of my remarks. One of the, the things that I mentioned, and I wasn't alone in this, is that this is, the ordinance that passed and the enlargement of powers, and especially the monthly meetings, is treating the commission in a balanced and fair way that's consistent with other commissions. We were the only one with quarterly meetings. And also, I did acknowledge and thank Councilmember Asatrian, who basically brought this to the attention of city council. There was pushback at various times, more so than I think there should have been, but it eventually passed. And I think without Councilmembers Asatrian's support and also city clerk, Dr. Abajian, this wouldn't have happened, because it hasn't happened in the past. And so I just wanted to thank them again for that support. And I think it gives us a lot of ability to move forward and get more done and more timely. So, thank you. Those were my remarks.
Thank you, Diane. Any other comments?
No, I have a question. Are we going to start ad hoc committees meeting? Okay.
I also would like to thank staff. It's been a busy month, really advocating for women and subjected to domestic violence. And we've held several events. And I want to thank Diane for your participation and being the moderator with the Armenian Bar Association. That was a great event, very informative. And all the commissioners, Commissioner Arum, for participating in almost every event we've held so far. So I'm very grateful for having such an engaged individuals and commissioners. And Dominica, yourself, Lucy, all of you. The staff have been just wonderful, guiding us and making sure that every event is successful and excellent. So, thank you. All right, I think we're at the end of our meeting.
Chair, if I may take advantage of the staff comments?
Yes.
Just to fill in just a bit here. So Dominica Magriditchian, it's my first time liaising this commission, and I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to all of you for making the transition an easy one and for saying yes and for being so responsive and wonderful to work with so far. But I'm sure that it's going to be that way moving forward. I also wanted to note that we had our Women's Equality Day event. That feels like a lifetime ago now, after we've been through October.
That's right.
But I didn't, I wanted to make sure that we weren't remiss on touching on that event and the reach that we had with over 200 attendees across the community and all of the project partners that made it a success. And that is made possible through all the connections that you bring as commissioners and all of the, you know, rolling up your sleeves and, and working right along staff to make it a possibility and a success. So thank you to all of you. I also wanted to just touch very lightly on our next agenda. There's two things that I'd like to bring forward to you for your consideration, Chair Markarian. The first is Chair, Commissioner Lambalot and Commissioner, Vice Chair Arum and I attended the 23rd Annual Women for Racial Justice Breakfast put on by the YWCA just a couple weeks ago. At that event, we connected with the Pasadena CSW, who is interested in making a connection with the Glendale CSW. And perhaps you might consider inviting them to make a presentation and see what we can do in joining forces and looking at this through a more regional lens. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Commissioner Hojoian, yes, I will be in touch on the ad hoc committee meetings as well ahead of next month's meetings. And then I'll also be bringing forward to you an end-of-year financials overview so that you know what we're closing out the year with. And then in the meantime, I'll be working with Chair Markarian to bring anything else that you would like to see on the agenda. So please let us know, and I'm happy to facilitate. I did also want to let you know that there is a Lilith Shakarian, who's been in touch with staff, family life educator. Sounds like she's been in touch with a number of the commissions before my time as liaison, who has an interest in making a presentation at a future commission meeting on domestic violence. I think she was planning on being here tonight. I don't see her in the audience, so I didn't want to miss mentioning that name and letting you know that there is an interest. And if I could get a nod, if that's okay, to also try to include her on the December agenda if you have an appetite for that.
Any comments?
Am I allowed to?
We can, we can work the future agenda out together with the chair at a later time.
Am I, so the, the commission comments are over?
You can make comments, but I'm just cautious that we don't come to a collective decision.
decision, because it is a comment period.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that Dr. Bajian and I, Dr. Bajian and I presented the report on the status of women to the Pasadena Commission on the Status of Women, and they were very receptive, and they were actually looking to us for guidance on how to conduct their, their commission work. So it was a really rewarding meeting, so I'm really happy to hear that they want to collaborate with us or work with us.
That's great. Very good. Thank you. All right, this takes us to the ends of our agenda. May I please have motion to adjourn, and a second to adjourn the meeting? And I think our next scheduled meeting would be December 2nd, right? Correct? 4:30? 8? December 8th. Somehow I have it December 8th at 4:30, so. Motion to adjourn?
I make a move to end the meeting today at 5:02.
I'll second it.